Mr. Kurt.
Here.
Mr. McCullough here, Mr. Mabachlin here, Mr. Potts here, Mr. Shihun here, Mr. Wolf here, and Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, under announcements, are there any agenda edits from board members? Okay, seeing none, there will be an executive session after this meeting. And after that, we have a motion to approve the February 27th budget workshop meeting minutes, which is attachment number one. One second.
Second.
Wait, are we voting on this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know we were voting on it. Okay, go ahead.
First.
I second.
Okay, discussion. This agenda item was polled for the last meeting because there was some concern about the motion that was made during the workshop meeting minutes where we reduced the budget. We used $2 million from fund balance, we increased the, we decreased our taxes from the index plus special exceptions down to the index, and we added kindergarten and extracurricular activities back on to our budget. And there was a clarification statement that was added to that, and we need to edit that clarification statement, which says, it's on page seven of the minutes. Is it on page seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Below the timeline.
Right, says, "Mr. Kurt stated the effect of this motion is that kindergarten sports and extracurricular activities will remain in place for 2013-14 school year. Additionally, the proposed tax increase will reduce from 1.2534 mils to .6661 mils. This effectively is a procedural motion and nothing is final until final approval of the budget." It should not state, "Mr. Kurt stated," quote, and end quotes. This is just a clarification statement. I listened to the minutes. It said about 1 hour and 45 minutes to 1 hour and 48 minutes. There was a lot of discussion that took place after the motion was made by the board to clarify the motion that was made and exactly what it is we were voting on, in which time Mr. Kurt's actually stated that he had a question whether this was purely procedural or whether it was a binding vote, and we agreed as a board it was not a binding vote, that other options were still on the table. So I would recommend that we just strike "Mr. Kurt stated" and the quotations, but leave the clarification statement in there, because I think that's important.
Can we indicate that it's a clarification statement?
We can do whatever we want with it, but otherwise, the alternative is, we need to put in the four minutes of discussion that took place.
I don't think that's necessary. Let's strike Mr. Kurt's states, and I'm okay with that.
Correct, that's fine.
As long as it's.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for helping with the clarification. Thank you.
All right, now if that's done, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kurt.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Mabachlin, yes. Mr. Potts, yes. Mr. Shihun, yes. Mr. Wolf, yes. And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so when we get to the, and these meetings have, or these minutes have been approved as amended, okay? All right, moving on. Any public comments on agenda items only? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. Tonight, I'd like to report that the BCIU 2013 Annie Sullivan Award nominees are out, and this year, we have nominated one of our teachers here in Daniel Boone. Her name is Andrea Eckenrode. Just for a little bit of background, each year, the BCIU accepts nominations from different districts for this Annie Sullivan Award, which is an annual award that recognizes professional staff that dedicates their time and efforts to working with our students with special needs. This Thursday at the BCIU, they will name the finalists for this award. As I said, Andrea Eckenrode, our special education learning coach, who has been in that position for the last couple of years, has been selected as one of the finalists for this award. I mention this tonight because I simply want to publicly acknowledge Andrea for all the good things that she has done in support of our students with special needs and helping our overall special education programming, and wish her the best of luck. And everyone in Daniel Boone will be pulling for her to be selected as the Annie Sullivan Award winner for this year. She's up against three or four other candidates from around the county.
All right, that's good news.
So, moving on to, and if certainly, even if she doesn't win, I'm certainly planning to bring her back and have her honored by the board with a certificate.
Absolutely.
Under spring extracurricular report, just an update on some numbers as we are now well into the early part of our spring athletics. At our high school, we have five sports running. Baseball had 34 total students between JV and varsity sign up this year. Softball had 27 total students. Again, I'm not going to keep saying it, JV and varsity. Track, 47 males and 32 females. Boys volleyball, total 20 students. 20 total students, I think I said that wrong. Boys tennis has eight students involved, and boys lacrosse, 29 total students. At the middle school level, we have involved in our baseball program, 31 total students. That's two different teams. Softball has two total students, two different teams.
How many students?
Two.
Softball?
No, wait a minute, that's a misprint.
Goose, what was?
I misprinted that number.
Edit it.
No, I'm sorry, I'll have to get you, that's, I copied that wrong, so that might be 20, I'll have to check on that. Goose, if he would.
22.
22, she's giving me the, I edited a number out of there, my apologies. So for the minutes, 22 total students in softball, and track, which is coed, 65 total students. I don't have a breakdown between those. So just a general overview that all of those teams, now that the weather's getting nice, they are officially into their seasons, and obviously, for all of our teams, as always, we have high expectations and high hopes for them in their spring season this year. And finally, I wanted to add an event that took place today at the high school. Today was, if you notice, a number of us in the administrative realm and in the office were dressed in pink today. If you didn't get to see the coverage, we were honoring a staff member who is a, someone dealing with the, with cancer. And I was totally impressed today with what happened at the high school and the outpouring of support from the staff and the student body, and it actually involved some serious rearrangement of some people's looks. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hankel to come forward. I really want to give him and his team the credit today for this event, so I'm going to turn the mic over to them.
Is there a note that he still has?
Yes.
And Dr. Otto.
And Dr. Otto.
Yes, well, they were, they were chanting in the auditorium today, shave his head. They were pointing at Mr. Hankel, not me then. But Mr. Hankel, please, the floor is yours.
The person by which this is prehoused and that teacher is seen appears to differ from the general appearance here. But I want Tracy to talk about it. What we did was, I really, I mean, the principal building, we had just a great day, and then the students raised money and were relating to a part of the illness, cancer, kidney breast cancer, and she's signing in, and she's the evident symbol of hero. Tracy explained what happened, and it spanned approximately five school days, what the students at Daniel Boone High School did, and once she talks, I want to say something. We had 150 students in the auditorium, one live or several today, and the students at high school were unbelievable. Their behavior was so good, it was so impressive, and I really appreciate it. The students, Tracy, why don't you tell us?
Well, about a week and a half ago or so, Tuesday before Easter break, a couple of students, or a couple of teachers, rather, Aaron Stur, Perry Troyer, and Ashley Schoboski, came into my company today, and I've got a meeting going on in the back corner, and I've got four kids taking, they've got tests, five kids that I've worked with on their back for the day, and they said, "We want to challenge the students, if you raise $5,000 in five days for Misses Young, you'll shave your head, right?" I said, "Yeah, sure, whatever." Apparently, this is the way to get people to vote, because I was not the only one they had pushed. There were a total of 10 of us today who had our heads shaved, 500 and 500. So the reason that that came to fruition was because over the course of those five school days, the Wednesday before Easter break, and then the four days last week, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the kids did it. Not only reached that goal, but blew it out of the water, and they did all kinds of things. They organized a car wash on Monday at their break, they brought in their coins, they, I think they won a lot of couch cushions and car seats, the finals, you know, losing pennies and such. They sold muffins and homework, they did brownies, they, they just did a amazing job. And to me, what was most phenomenal about it is, I really don't think there was a single person in that building, student, teachers, staff member, who did contribute something, whether it was actual monetary donation, or collecting that money on weekends, or driving home, or whatever, or submitting a name to be honored today in our ceremony. And not only did our building completely hand off themselves, but we put it out for the other buildings as well, the district office, and the other high school buildings in the district, and they all embraced us as well. Right now, and keep in mind that the total changes every time I think I'm getting counted, somebody says, "Oh, here's more", which, I'm not complaining about it, we are a total of $75,000 in five days. And keep in mind, the challenge was five times. So they not only met that goal, but they went above that goal. They continue to do so. So, great job to children, great job to the faculty, the staff, the administrators, the employees, just an amazing, amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I do want to thank all the persons that helped me today, and I do want to thank the press, Chelsea Television's out there today, and we do have to save up the world TV money, and the staff that were there this morning here, and I do appreciate the coverage, the press games today, it was great, so we should refer to it. So thanks.
Thank you.
And just again, I would want to echo Mr. Hankel's comments, I was actually very proud myself to be superintendent today, as I always am, but today was actually very special. That was truly Daniel Boone at our best today with what those kids did and what the school did for this, for this teacher who's in a very difficult time right now. So, again, Mr. Hankel, staff at the high school, put it in the minutes, thank you very much, that was a great day, good way to start the week.
That concludes my superintendent's report. Dr. Otto, I'm sorry to interrupt, I have to be excused from the meeting now, I have an obligation.
Okay, Connor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurt.
Good night.
Any public comment on the superintendent's report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum instruction.
Last Wednesday, we had our monthly curriculum and instruction meeting. There are two items on the agenda, there were actually some additional items. I'm going to turn it over to the committee chair, Mr. Shaheen, for a summary of what happened at our curriculum and instruction committee meeting.
We led, as Dr. Otto said, last Wednesday at 7:30, and as usual, we adjourned by 9 o'clock, we had the meeting, it kept very active, it was probably about 10 or 12 people in the audience. We came, we talked about a number of things. One of the biggest subjects that I wanted to discuss and I had Dr. Mr. Hankel to work on was the concept of block scheduling. A lot of the high schools, a lot of school districts in the area are going to block scheduling, Boyertown, Lynn Valley, among the few, I believe, I'm not sure, Wilson also, is it Wilson?
We're, we're now, as of now, we're on block schedule, we're just starting the, how, what, Wiser is.
The Council of Wiser.
Block of years.
They've been doing it for a long time.
They're doing it now, and, and, well, kind of a great thing to say about it. One of the things that, what I did ask, and this is nothing coming from the board yet, is I did ask Mr. Hankel to, once he has next year's schedule in place for the students, to then go and model it as a block schedule. You know, not that they're going to go, but at least we, so you could get some of the hurdles out of the way, because it's a learning experience, this is how you do it. So if he gets something where it's not going to actually be in place, and he works through those, those idiosyncrasies of a block schedule, then if the board looks at something like that and wants adoption for the following school year, we've got a lot of these learning themes out of, out of the way. What I did ask him to do is there are several types of block schedule, and what I did not want, nor did anybody on, on the committee, was a block schedule where you could potentially take Spanish in the fall term and not take Spanish again until the next fall, or even potentially the next spring term, which could be 12 to 18 months away. The schedule should be a block schedule where you take Spanish in a term a year, you take math in a term a year. One of the comments that was made is that a lot of times, some of the AP courses, you're not completing all the materials needed for the AP test by the date of the AP test, just because there isn't enough time on some, on some of the subjects, physics and some of the chemistry and some of the others. This block schedule would allow them to do that. It would allow you to go right from biology into biology lab, chemistry, right into chemistry lab, even though they try to schedule it that way, it doesn't always work. So they're, they're going to work that out and then be able to report back to us probably in the first meeting of September, present it to the board, and then have the board, you know, look at it in the term of whether, you know, we'd like to have them actually move forward to putting it into the fall of the year.
You said the first week of September?
Yeah, that, that Wednesday's our first meeting in September for the curriculum.
Does it help 11th to 12th graders who are going on to college, that you should?
That was part of one of the.
Again, I'm asking you a question.
Intangible benefits, you're already going to go into a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Thursday type of arrangement, and it's not a shock, all of a sudden, you sit in the classroom an hour and a half.
So there is, okay, so that does help, I mean, again, I'm asking, I'm not.
If you look at the US News World Report, I believe it issues, lists the top high schools in the nation, a vast number of those high schools use a block schedule. It allows for a lot more work. Some of the teachers that were present, you know, they could see it being more work for them, but at the same time, we have somebody, take math for an example, we're struggling with the concept of math, you're not limited to that 45 minutes, you can continue working through and, and tie things together a little cleaner with the extra time. We did not want that extra time to be used for homework. That was one of the complaints that was done in a couple of districts, that they still talk for the 45 minutes, and the rest of the period was homework. That's not the concept that is going to be done.
That's not block scheduling.
It's going to be, it's going to be instructional time. You may give 15 minutes at the end, start your own case you got questions, but predominant amount of time would be used for instructions.
I mean, when I was in school, you know, you did your homework at home.
Right, that's why they call it homework.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's what we're looking for. So again, sometime in September, the, the instruction committee will see the efforts and then break the board and explain the pros and cons, and see what that goes for us. You know, it's strictly an academic action.
Would that also help address the issues of like SAT prep and things of that nature?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any questions, anybody else? Okay, you want to move on to the next item?
The, the, did ask Dr. Otto, right now, the plan, we have a librarian for each one of our buildings, and the question was asked, do we need a librarian? And again, this is not the insult of the librarians, you know, being naive answering questions. So what, not knowing what the librarians actually do, we asked them to come up with a list of, of what they do, try to look at what they do, and that was also the same as the guidance counselors situation, because, you know, we're looking at guidance counselors per building, and the question is, do we need a guidance counselor at the elementary level per building? I'm naive in that situation, as was the rest of the committee. So we asked, what do you actually do as a guidance counselor? So they're going to put a, for lack of a better term, a time study together for us, to provide us at the next meeting, so that we can look and see, okay, first of all, are you doing what you should be doing, or is it somebody else's job that should be done here? And secondly, is, is it necess, is it needed that if we move forward with any action to make, and we see that we, you know, end up keeping the guidance counselor in place, or do we not need that guidance counselor? Right now, the guidance counselor still is existing, because if you remove those head counselors number of buildings, does it become a roving guidance counselor, or is there an abandonment with the existing guidance counselors to absorb what is being done? So, we're just trying to, you know, be able, trying to understand what those duties are, so that a proper recommendation can be made.
And they're on tap to come back to the next curriculum meeting.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, we just, we touched on the guidance counselors as part of our policy committee meeting as well, because we were just sort of talking about what information's supposed to be disclosed and isn't disclosed between parents and so on and so forth. And it appeared to me from that discussion that, you know, our guidance counselors were acting more like psychologists than they were guidance counselors, and, which really isn't something they're trained to do.
Right.
And so, I'm not saying that's what the case was, but that was a perception during the conversation that we're having, that many times, they're being asked to do things that they're not trained to do and really shouldn't be doing. So I'm glad you guys had an opportunity to take a look at that.
And that actually came out, because several of the things that, that the guidance counselor, she was from APC, said, you know, they're handling the integration into school period, you know, the bullying, some of the things that I wouldn't think a guidance counselor should necessarily do, but, so they're going to put that together. I mean, they've got support groups for, for autism, they're doing support groups for other things. Again, is that a guidance counselor function, or is that a psychol, school psychologist function? Don't know, but, you know, we'd like to, I, again, for lack of a better term, some time study of what they're actually doing, what is spending their time, and what are they doing?
We could have the conversation on that as far as if possibly APC and AIC, though, I should say APC would close, obviously, we're going to have larger groups, and obviously, then what is the role of that counselor? I think it's going to be more important at that point. You're going to have maybe 12, 15 students, it might go up to 25 students. Can you cover that with one, or are you going to need two? So I think.
Or, or again, is, is doing a autism support group a guidance counselor function?
Well, that's, that's.
That's where I guess I'm, that's where my head is going, is more of, you know, clearly, these positions have a job description.
That's correct.
And so, are these people doing what's in the job description, or are they doing something different? And is there a liability for the school district if they're doing something different? I mean, that's another consideration. And so I think that's, you know, and I think we should get some of the administrative input on, on this as well, in terms of, you know, what are the others, what are guidance counselors or librarians doing in other school districts, and how is it different than Daniel Boone? I mean, you know, we should be getting, not just looking at what we're, what we're doing internally, but what is the standard out there that other school districts are using for these positions?
Right now, with the librarian situation, it was somewhat unclear, but it, it looked as though the libraries are being used for several purposes. The, the workstations are being used all the time by the students to research, because not every student has internet access, and not every student has a computer, although we'd like to think they do, they don't. So when they have to do a research paper, the only time they really have to do it is to go to the library for their study hall. And that became very clear. So one of the things we asked is, you know, did we need a three to five-year sign-in in the library? Let me know. Because if the library went from 1,000 students a week signing in to 200 students a week signing, there's obviously a lack of use on the library, but if the library is going from 1,000 to 1,500, because there are more, we need to know that, because we may be making a mistake. And that, and we're trying to get, I'd rather make a decision using data than using the decision made upon, made upon some type of assumptions, and we're not in the building, so that's, that's going to be important to that sign. I, I don't, I mean, they're talking about, you know, a lot of students still signing books out, bringing books home, and, and if that's so, it's more than just signing books out, the librarians are assisting in computer research, they're assisting in, in book research. I want to know that, because if that's what they're doing, then that's part of the educational process, and maybe, you know, we're making a mistake there, and we maybe think that, but I'd like to at least get that time study, so we can sit down in that, that usage study, so we can sit down and say, okay, it hasn't gone up, or it has gone up and down, and you know what we're doing.
It definitely sounded like there wasn't a doubt between, like, the librarian telling us before our conversation.
And I have seen some, they've sent me some preliminary numbers, I'll put that all together and get it ready for the next committee meeting.
Are students going there because that's where the computers are, and it's accessible, as opposed to, let's say, going to a computer lab and doing the research?
The computer lab is part of the library, okay? And the librarians are assisting them in doing research on computers.
Okay.
But again, until we get those numbers.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, any comment from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next section.
Okay, under buildings and grounds, just wanted to mention, I'm going to tie the two of these together. We did not have a facilities committee meeting this month, but we're looking toward next meeting. Obviously, the APC proposal that's on the table is coming due as far as a, a decision date. What we were kind of tentatively looking at was the first eligible date for a, a special meeting to, to vote for that, although you don't need a special meeting to do it. But the first eligible date where we would be able to have a public meeting to do that would be May 6, which is the first Monday in May.
Correct.
Which would be the same night as the facilities committee, but you need, obviously, the whole board would have to vote on.
Can I ask, what, I understand the May 6, why couldn't you push the 13?
You can.
Part of.
You absolutely can.
I mean, I would recommend that, because we, I mean, everybody's got enough going on on Mondays. If, if we could just wait and do it during the next committee of the whole meeting, which is a week later, with the recommendation coming out of, of that committee, it seemed like it would make more sense.
Well, there is no special advertising needed anymore for the discussion, it just has to be put on an agenda, and a decision needs to be made.
I have a question, would that week hurt you?
The only, the only thing that's impacting with APC is we have, we will have some budgetary implications for being able to close APC, if that's the way the board votes. Beyond that, obviously, we have logistical issues.
We're going to vote on our preliminary budget on the 20th.
On the 20th of May.
Point at anyone.
So the, yes, because, and that's under the.
So if we do it on the 13th, you're still okay either way?
Yes.
I'm looking at Mrs. Penza.
I know, Dr. Otto, I was going to talk about it a little bit later, but it's just going to depend how many changes of what needs to go back in and out with the board because it's a one-week turnaround if you remember because we're not a two-week, so, yeah.
Again.
I mean, I can.
Are we, are we, Mr. Penza, you can answer this. Are we allowed to do more than one person? If we have to on the 6th, can we do it over the 12th? I know Mr. Kurtz calls in, so those people can't make it.
But why?
In other words, can we vote on the 6th to give Mrs. Penza and Dr. Otto?
You don't need, the, the extra week frankly is not, I don't think, going to be critical.
I mean, it's, I just, I prefer to do it.
Yeah, I think it's just a combination of many decisions.
Okay, that's why I'm asking if that would help you.
Again, just in, in the course of events, the plan hasn't changed from what we originally discussed. That, that plan is out there. The transcript is available. We haven't had a lot of public comment on it. I did, I just do want to make the board aware that regardless of which way you vote, I had to send a letter to what's called the School Reconfigurations Department at PDE in anticipation that this might happen. It's not anything that needs board approval, but I will copy that letter to you just so you're aware that it's out there. But that's part of the quote, "due process" that we have to do in this, in this whole process of potentially shutting down a building. So I'll make sure that official letter is emailed to you tomorrow.
I mean, I think the 13th would be fine at this point. The purpose of the cooling off period is to give the board time to, and the public to digest what's going on. And if any additional information comes forward, to be able to consider it, an extra seven days isn't going to matter.
No. So just for the benefit of the press and the public that is faithful to attending these meetings, a decision will be made by the board on Monday, May 13th regarding the future of the Amity Primary Center. That's all I have.
Okay. Any public, any board discussion? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Buildings and grounds? Okay. We'll move on to finance.
Under finance, items A, B, C, and D are routine as they tend to appear every month for different issues. Attachments have been provided. Under item E, we are asking the board to approve our Type A lunches as this is written there. Just let me read what's there, to the benefit of anyone that might not have an agenda. Lunches and breakfast prices for the 13, 14 school year are going to be, I'll paraphrase, elementary, secondary breakfast and lunch are increasing five cents from 2012, 13 with leaving the adult breakfast and lunch prices the same. And this is basically, and prices are listed there, part of this is part of our annual evaluation of our food service prices. And to give you a little bit more background, I'm going to turn it over to our business manager and then we'll take questions.
Basically, the reason for the recommendation is to cover food costs. We do need to stay ahead of the Helping Young Free Kids Act mandate, trying to keep our prices consistent with those other schools within town. We wanted to try to have as minimal impact, obviously, on the families as possible. If you'll recall, last year we did have quite significant increases in our prices because three out of the last five years, we did not increase our prices at all. So in trying to keep up, like you said, with the Helping Young Free Kids Act mandate, we do need to continue to increase them, but we were thinking at least the minimum of the five cents so that we don't get into a period of where we might need to do a third price or something.
Does this keep us on, does this keep us on track of getting back to where we were supposed to be? Because I thought there was like a gap that we were going to cover over some future period, whether it was two or three years.
There's a gap that's going to be ongoing and the department then through the department, through the nutrition provides us with a tool. And we actually are ahead of that curve right now. We're never going to actually yet to where they want us to be. It, I mean, it's just, we're not going to get there unless we increase our prices a dollar.
Well, I thought there was a time period where we had to have the gap to meet that specific amount of fees for, for the service. I thought that's how we had to explain it last year.
It was, but things have changed through. I can verify that, but I don't believe that it's, there's a time limit now.
I think we just need to verify that before we, before we vote on it too. We're on target with if there's a mandated gap or not. It would appear to me that if there is a target and you're never going to meet it, then why have the target? If this doesn't make sense.
We were at a lower, lower rate in order to maintain what the federal government.
It was a free and reduced lunch, if I'm not mistaken. Is that an issue?
It's the difference, I believe, between the paid and what we get reimbursed for paid lunches versus the free and reduced.
Correct.
And like I said, they provide through that tool, we input what our prices are now. We're actually ahead. We really wouldn't have to raise prices this year, but I, again, don't want to get into that area of having to do it substantially in the future. But I will certainly check and I can email you out tomorrow when I find out regarding.
Is there a deadline for when we have to vote on this?
We've actually raised it mid-year at one point. I mean, so you can raise.
I know, but here's my question is, is there a deadline?
I would say the June board meeting would be the deadline.
My, my suggestion would be that we take this up in the finance committee and discuss it a little bit further because I, I had peppered Ms. Penza with lots of questions regarding this issue, taking some of the information we had from last year and looking at those spreadsheets and then asking her for additional information. For example, how many meals are we actually serving in each of these things? Who's buying at the elementary school, the middle school, the high school? How many adults? How many children? How many breakfasts? How many lunches? Just to get a sense of what, what's happening in terms of the revenues that are being generated here. And I had sent an email off, I think I copied you, Mr. Potts and Dr. Otto and Ken Smith, to get a sense of what are we spending out of the cafeteria funds? And for new equipment and renovating old kitchens and things of that nature? I know with facilities, we do a lot of that manpower in-house. I don't know to what degree our labor costs are reimbursed out of the general.
I thought it was mainly the capital that we were allowed to do in public and those kind of things. About the only thing we could do out of that fund.
Out of the cafeteria fund.
Out of the cafeteria fund, yes.
Yeah, but I guess the question I had was if you were hire a third-party contractor in to come in and do that work, you would pay that third-party contractor out of cafeteria funds, correct?
We crossed that once before and we were told that it had to be a physical piece of equipment that stayed there. It could not be delivered to install or modify.
Again.
I can't remember. That's why I'm asking the question. Sounds like a legal question. We can consult.
My recommendation is that you can buy, only buy physical assets.
Because that's what happened when we bought, when we're looking at.
Again, but I could be wrong. It's been a while, but it's not good to look at. It'd be a good idea for finance committee to look at that. Because like you said, if you could pass on, have somebody do it and take those funds out of capital.
Reserve, I mean, not capital reserve, but out of the general fund.
The enterprise fund.
Well, I know you can't do it out of the general fund.
No, no, no.
The enterprise fund.
I agree with Mr. Penza.
Well, that's the cafeteria fund.
No, my point was if, if, if you're allowed to pay for both labor and material out of the cafeteria fund to replace equipment.
Correct.
But we've only been, we've been using our facilities personnel to do the labor and facility, our, our facilities budget isn't being reimbursed by the cafeteria budget for that work, then maybe it should be.
Then we go over to a third-party to do it.
Or you get a third-party to do it and we're not spending our time doing things that the funds are available.
There's two questions, which is can we reimburse, can we reimburse ourselves or should we go out and hire someone?
Well, that's, yeah. I think we need to look at that.
Either way, should we look at, yeah.
I also think we ought to do a capital reserve study, understand what our kitchen needs are going forward and whether we are charging enough, the funds are available to do those things going forward.
It makes sense.
Is that something Sedexo is doing with, with other schools?
I don't know. They can probably help us.
I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I would figure Mr. Smith would know what our capital needs are going forward, you know, do we need to replace a dishwasher and oven or?
Bless you.
We did, we did replace that steamer at $36,000.
Those things aren't cheap. Right. So I want to know how much money we have sitting in that cafeteria fund? How much is available over the next five years? Should we be raising lunch prices to make sure that we've, we're putting money aside to pay for these things?
No, because on one hand it makes sense. You have Mr. Smith do the work in-house, saving us money, but it then is coming out of the general fund instead of the capital reserve.
It's not saving us anything.
It is, yeah. Maybe.
At the end of the day, we want to break.
That's one thing with finance. The other thing you need to look at is, is, are we on the line? And if not, is there repercussions to not being online such as not being reimbursed for free and reduced lunch by the federal government and/or applying or a penalty for not being in line?
Or getting walled for, you're going to do a dollar one year instead of.
Because if you remember, part of the, the, you get, if I'm not making, correct or wrong, there's, there's a portion of our food that is in that's government surplus too, is it not? So we, we don't, when we ran into this a number of years, we want to make sure that we continue getting that surplus and we're not in some type of violation where we lose that potential surplus that we're getting.
Right. Like I said, I mean, they set that tool out and in reality, you don't have to raise prices at all. We actually have what they're calling the credit, which I'm not recommending you do. So we are following, you know, their rules.
Understand, but I want to make sure that somewhere down the line, you don't end up, there's a line in the sand.
And here's the thing, we, we have a credit now until they change the formula.
Correct. Or we go from, or we go from like.
We didn't have a formula a year ago. We got a formula and found out we were behind.
Or we go five cents this year and then.
Next year we'll be behind again.
Which is why I'm trying to at least recommend something, but not to the extent that.
So we're going to hold this for further information?
I think we, I think we table it until, you know, the finance committee has a chance to look at the numbers in a little bit more depth. And we were going to try to have a meeting this month, we're just trying to schedule that at this point in time.
All right.
So be it. All right. So the next item here is.
Under item F, we're going to approve, ask for your approval of the appointment of the National Penn Bank as a deputy tax collector for the duly-elected tax collector of the borough of Birdsboro pursuant to the agreement, which has been reviewed by Mr. Subers. This is a formal appointment that we annually do and, and at this point it's changed due to the unfortunate passing away of the former Birdsboro tax collector. So Danielle, I hope there's anything else.
It's not really an annual. It's back, I want to say last June, Birdsboro was our last municipality to not be with the lockbox. And you guys did approve this agreement. The only change here is the person because again, the previous tax collector passed away. The borough appointed this new tax collector. We just needed the official documentation to have her name on it.
What, I don't see a name here. I see the borough.
Judith, on your account, it's Judith Loomis.
I mean, again, should it not be part of the motion?
When we make the motion formally.
Okay, I get it.
I have a question. Did Birdsboro actually finalize it?
Hold it. Judith Loomis is going to be the tax collector?
Yes. She's been doing it. She was appointed by them.
Oh, I know she's temporary, but has she permed it?
She would, until December 31st, I believe, for this, I think she's been issuing out Mrs. Swisher's card.
That's okay.
So hold it. What we're proposing here though is that National Penn will be the tax collector.
Yes, that's what.
Which is how the current arrangement is.
Right. So why do we need Judith Loomis's name on here?
That's what I'm asking.
Oh.
This is the exact same motion that we had on the last time when Ryan had given it to me. So I don't know. I mean, we did have Mrs. Swisher on it, so I don't know.
I mean, if it's between National Penn and the district, then National Penn's name should be on there, not any individual person.
They're the lockbox, then we're going to charge, we're going to give Judith Loomis a couple pennies per.
Yeah, but she is the tax collector. The depository is National Penn. She is the tax collector.
She's no longer collecting the money.
She's not collecting the tax.
But she still has the title. She's still getting a fee for it. She still is the tax collector.
But the money never actually ever passes through her hands in any shape or form.
But, but there has to be a physical person as a tax collector, which is her. I didn't say she collected the money. I said she, that's what I'm saying. This thing should be looked at again.
What happens after December 31st? Another one gets elected.
Then the borough will select a new one.
Another one gets elected.
We as taxpayers go out and.
And then we'll be revisiting this again.
Correct.
But the position with it, right now we have three tax collectors that never physically touch anything.
Okay, well, we can make it however quick you want.
And they get so many pennies per unit.
Because they keep a record of, they keep their books, but they don't collect the money anymore. They keep record of all the taxes collected, who collected and who's delinquent, everything else. They just don't physically get the money deposited anymore.
Is that why they don't make it? The fee was reused or something, I think.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. But Mr. Shaheen's question is, is why is the bank named? The bank's not the tax collector.
Well, they're the, they're deputy tax collector.
That's, that might be the point.
As opposed to the duly-elected tax collector.
That's my, that might be true.
Tax collector for the duly-elected. Okay, I got it.
That's by why.
And just for the public's benefit, I mean, I believe National Penn Bank charges us what, 10 cents a check or something like that?
I'd have to look.
I thought I saw that in the agreement.
There's a monthly fee.
There's a monthly fee of like $135 and then there's a processing fee of 10 cents a check.
And we also made the tax collector.
I think the tax collector's the 10 cents. But I'm not, I'd have to go back and look.
I don't know. I have a, I have a question. Mr. Potts is.
Why can't we bring that in? If we're writing a check to the National Penn Bank, we send that check to the bank?
We're not writing a check to the bank.
You're writing it to the district.
Well, excuse me, to Daniel Boone, school district. And then you're depositing that check at National Penn Bank. That check then goes to the tax collector?
No, we have a, we have a down, we get a download from National Penn, then we wire the money to our.
Mr. Potts paid X amount.
Why can't we keep that? Can we keep any of this in-house to alleviate individuals with tax collector?
I think that, we ran into this issue where you, you leave.
You're legalizing one per municipality.
The municipalities can decide whether or not they want tax collectors or not. We can't decide for the municipality whether they have a tax collector.
Because they collect more than just our tax.
Right.
That's why we get your right in this case.
Because we had suggested that anyways, but then it was like, well, you know, what power do we have to tell the municipalities?
Because it's just not our actors, it's our VIT, it's just not our school tax, you know, they're collecting.
Per capita tax.
Township tax, per capita tax, their VIT.
Their per capita tax. That's right. You're right.
Okay. Any other discussion on that issue?
Okay. Moving on to item G, we're, we'll be asking the board to approve the renewal proposal and food service contract for Sedexo LLC with a guaranteed return of $106,230 for 2013, 14. Just for information, this is year three of a possible four-year renewal and the guarantee remains unchanged from 2012, 13. And again, this is part of the renewal process under the current contract. And I'll turn Danielle over for a little bit more narrative as she's the one that works with putting the, the numbers to this.
Back in August, if you'll recall, the finance committee brought a recommendation to the board to actually go out to bid for food service per the direction of the Department of Education. The Department of Education did some contacting the federal government on their own, recognizing the time-consuming task that it is for school districts to go out to bid, and they asked for an alternative. Back in November, we actually received communication from PDE that the districts could evaluate their renewal contracts for next year in relation to their original contracts and assess to see if there was a material change that existed due to the result of implementing the new standards of the Helping Young Free Kids Act. They also recommended that we review it in coordination with our solicitor, which I have done. So at this point, we are actually recommending to go along with the renewal with Sedexo for next year, rather than going out to bid based on Mr. Subers' opinion, our opinion, and the, the allowability now from the Department of Education.
Question. The guarantee money, back to the earlier discussion, does it go in the general fund or capital?
It goes in the cap fund, but it's, you're not actually going to see $106,000. What it is, is when Sedexo takes their revenues that we get in and all the expenses that they are paying for, at the end of the day, if it's not $106,000 in the net, then they, like say it's $100,000, then they would kick in the additional six. So it's not necessarily an influx of $106,000 every year.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Unrelated, since we're on a cafeteria, obviously, we had an email sent this week as far as high school or any school of that matter, as far as students, either their account zero, they, they forgot their money. We have that in place that we deny no one of a lunch, correct?
Yes, that, that's, I don't want to go into detail in that email, but that is kind of an overblown comment. We will not let students go without food. I just want to point out that last year, due to some issues, we were starting to notice some negative balances that were starting to become excessive and we decided to clamp down a little bit with that. But at no time will we, will, if, if we're noticing situations, we have our principals reach out to find out what the problem is and we will provide minimal lunch and then we'll have to charge for that. But we're not going to let that go on the way it had been going on last year, so.
I believe on the news, it was up towards Connecticut, Massachusetts, one of those, where they actually said they had to supply them with a grilled cheese, where I believe we restated a cheese sandwich.
I believe it's a cheese sandwich, an apple.
It's, it's a, it's a minimal lunch. It's to make sure they get something.
But the bottom line is, the student will get something.
Correct.
I don't want to have an unhappy cafeteria worker say, no, get lost. And obviously, the student goes away, just try to fight.
They will get something to eat. It may not be what they want, but they will be offered a meal.
You know, look, it, we should have some sort of dollar figure in mind where, you know, if an account goes negative by, pick the number, that there's automatically some sort of action that's taken. The parents are contacted, the student's notified and so on and so forth.
That's already in place.
What's the dollar figure? That's my point.
I would say maybe $5 negative, the connect ed call goes out.
Yeah, there's, there's, I don't know what the automatic.
Letters, I believe, are mailed.
At what point do we say enough's enough? Is it $200 in arrears or is it?
They only spend $200 for the year.
I, I'm just asking the question.
I know, but I'm saying, but the problem is we incur costs. If connect ed, we don't. Then when we get those letters, then you're incurring costs. I think it is like five.
I want to say $5. It might be $10.
Seven. Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too.
You're testing.
You'll be my kid.
No, but again, seriously, I just want to make sure, we got this email, and the email, obviously, appears to be blown out of proportion. Every child will get a cheese sandwich, and an apple, and something to drink, and just leave it at that and move on, and let the administration handle the financial end of it, once we know that every child will be offered a meal.
Right, and in this case, I'd like to thank Mr. Hurley was on top of this, the one that actually came from, I don't want to mention names, but it was handled properly, and we're, I don't want to say I'm not concerned, but we have that under control, we're not, we're not seeing any.
And if you do that, it's not prepared, I mean, you don't want that going for five, six weeks of.
Well, no, we wouldn't do that, we would begin to have, we have calls, and if we, sometimes it's.
Make some phone calls if we can't connect.
Well, and then if there's a situation that's, you know, it could be a private monetary situation, we'll offer the availability to get free and reduced, so we take care of all that.
I was gonna say, it's free and reduced, I mean, those options are available, there shouldn't be an issue of people just not paying.
And that's the message we try to convey, we try to do that with some compassion.
Right. Okay, great. Any other comments on cafeteria items in general, or, no? Okay. Any comments from the public?
Shane Cockle, we're thirty, you better come around. Next week, next meeting was more about the outside sports.
Shane, does this have to do with finance, with what's on the agenda?
Well, it has to do with finance, but.
Okay, can you, can you just wait till the end? Yeah, just wait till the end.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, any other questions on this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel.
Okay, I would like to just mention, we have our routine personnel accruals, I would like to point out, for the benefit of the public and two of our board members, our tradition here of Daniel Boone, which I think is a neat tradition, we'll be appointing Mr. Shaheen as temporary school board president, to be able to sign his daughter's high school diploma, and we will also be appointing Mr. Shermanaro as temporary school board president, for the purpose of signing his son's high school diploma, this is the second time he will have been through that process. So I just wanted to point those out as a kind of a good news thing. And finally, the curtailment resolution discussion, really not a discussion, just a reminder that related to the budget, anything that we need to do, if, depending on the way the budget goes, those, that process still has to happen if we are going to move forward in that direction, so.
When is, when is our walk away date coming?
I would, I would say, June thirtieth. Well, I would say, given that you have to post a proposed final budget, I would say the latest you want to do that is in May.
When, let's backtrack, when do we gotta post a finalized budget?
The proposed final has to be done thirty days prior to your vote, so tentatively now, we would be scheduled to vote June twenty-fourth, so I try to put it at your closest meeting, which would be May twentieth, that you would approve a proposed final to go out for inspection.
So that would be the date.
You do know you can then change it from then until.
So then, the voting meeting in May would be the date that you would have to.
My understanding from Mr. Subers was, it's just a notification, so.
Right, it is, but you can send it off June thirtieth. But the critical issue is, is not, it's not really the PDE issue, it's the personnel issue, they have, there's a ten-day notice that you have to give, and there are certain notice rights that kick in for, on the employment side of this.
But understanding that we're working with.
No, I'm just, I'm.
We're trying to go, we don't want to go and put something in that can't be taken back.
Well, those notices, can you guys just work back the dates from, because that starts the first day of school, correct?
Sure.
The notices.
I would have to get clarification on that.
I think it's like sixty days' notice, or ten, you know.
It might actually be the end of the fiscal year, but I can clarify that for you, it might be June thirtieth.
All right, well, then.
We would need to know that, because that would impact what we're doing.
I will get that out to you as soon as I have a definite clarification of it, that's all I have on that. And that concludes my comments on your personnel.
Okay, any board discussion on personnel? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public? All right, we'll move on to programs. I'll just take all of these together, these are our annual submissions of different grants that, under federal government grants, the only one that's not a federal government grant is the accountability block grant, and that, again, is always subject to putting it in on the revenue side, and then also putting it in on the expenditure side, so it's neutral money. We don't get the money, either we find another way to do it, or we don't do what would have been in the grant. And that's really all I have under there.
Any increases?
I think the accountability block grant is flat.
Accountability block is flat, I'm not sure what Mrs. Trainer had.
Title grants are generally.
I know that I, because of the sequestration possibility, I.
They may be lower.
This year, and then I took, I believe, like, nine percent off of that, what I'm getting here, what she's actually applying for, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious to whether.
I don't know.
What we're looking at.
Okay, any other board comment?
Yes, last month, I asked for your list for the rebirth of the tool we usually get on an ongoing basis from the administration listing, where all the Daniel Boone, all the students of the school district went if they didn't go to Daniel Boone, and we used to get that on a monthly basis, and we were gonna look into that, to resolve that.
Yeah, we actually, I think we went, I don't have it formally in this agenda, but we did go back and study that, if that's something the board wants to see.
I think the board said they'd like to see that, we'd like to know how many are going to Covington Christian, how many are going to somewhere else, you know, the, I mean, it'd be a good idea to know where our schools are.
Homeschooling, cyber charter.
Cyber charter, there is that, to schools that.
The date is available.
The date is available.
Well, the heck, because we have to transport them, so we all get that data.
Right, we can just make it a routine report as part of your board packet.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, my question is, do we even get how many kids are home school, how many kids are in charter school?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we have all that, too.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that.
We used to get that on a monthly basis, along with enrollment.
I mean, I'd like to see, you know, up and down, how many people.
Well, then, why don't we amend, we can put that in as part of a monthly enrollment, make that be a standing item under there.
That's fine.
Give it a name. Just put another column at the bottom, you know, how many are in cyber charter, how many are at home school, how many are in private school.
It was a full page, because there's a number of different schools that these students could attend.
You'd be surprised.
Or all of us, we'd see, we'd see the numbers, and they'd change, but just.
Right, well, I was always thinking there's like ten or twelve different schools that we busted.
Yeah, that's what I meant, there was.
I mean, it wasn't just, you know, everybody thinks it's probably only four or five, but there's probably almost, last time, ten or twelve.
Each one of the broker schools that driving these students.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments from board members? Okay, public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy.
Under policy, there's a lot on the agenda, however, let me group them for you, the first group here, A through, that are all labeled second reading, have been through the process, they're ready for your approval, and obviously, if there are any comments, certainly communicate them to us, if there's any other changes that you see, they've been sent to the solicitor as well. The second group have been through the first level of the policy committee, and A through H in that group are coming forward as a first reading with very, very minor wording edits, there was nothing really substantive changed in those policies, but even if there are minor wording edits, we make sure they come forward to you as a first and second reading. And again, as you have a chance to review those, remember they are first reading, if there are comments that you have, please forward them to us, and as you see these policies, these are in the two-hundred series, again, all student-related. And the last group is this process that we've started, these really need no change whatsoever, we're just stamping a new date on them, a couple of them are administrative guidelines, and a couple of them are policies. And we also do have another policy review committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday night, which we'll be moving forward with a series of additional policies for review, it's going along very well.
Okay, any board discussion? Okay, seeing none, public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to transportation.
No report.
Okay, any old business?
I have none from the administration.
We heard anything from Market Street? Any progress with that Market Street group?
We are still working on the, getting the contract with word of the way we want it, and I'll double back with Mr. Subers on that before our next meeting.
Is there, can we get that, like, done by the voting meeting? It would seem to me, it's been a month since we talked about it, I can't imagine it would take Fox Rothschild a month to get that wrapped up, I mean, particularly since they do business with other school districts where Fox Rothschild is the solicitor.
Mm-hmm, I can clarify that for you.
Can't imagine it should be taking this long.
There was a little snafu with some of the wording in there that we had to have squared away, that was no fault of our own.
Right. Okay, any other old business? Seeing none, new business?
None from the administration.
Do we want to start looking at a date or dates possibly for the budget workshop?
Yeah, I mean, it's open for board discussion, you know, if we've got something else to add to, to where we are, I was thinking sort of towards the end of April, beginning of May, would be a time to do another budget workshop, but, you know, I was kind of hoping we'd have some sort of resolution with APC.
Again, my, again, Mr. Basil, that's true, also, the cafeteria stuff, the finance, and I know Mr. Shaheen's gonna say, you know, talk to our contractor partners, so, probably May, probably be a little better.
I would say probably May, because if, I mean, right now, unless something breaks, there's really not much change.
And that's true, and again, APC's up in the air, but I think that's, you're right, I think we've decided that.
Last year, we had one the first week of May.
Right.
But again, we're.
Fine, it's just, that'd be like the eighth.
But you're right, I think there's still a lot of mall shoveling.
I mean, should we not wait until after we do the vote for APC, because that is likely to determine what we're gonna do.
Unless you do it at a workshop meeting.
Yeah, let's do it at a workshop.
But we've got three people that aren't here, so we really need to.
Yeah, the first week of May, first two weeks of May are happening.
Well, just a calendar quirk, next month is, the second Monday is the thirteenth, and then we go right back-to-back, so we only have a five-day workday period in between seven days.
What about, what about the thirteenth, fourteenth, or fifteenth, that way we know what APC has been decided, and by that time, Mr. Basil, finance being.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that we target a date by the voting meeting, and hopefully we've got the other three board members here, and I'll send an email out to the entire board to remind everybody, start setting aside some dates that work best, so we don't have to do this at the meeting, we can.
Fifteenth, we have, we normally schedule, schedule a vote, cancel it.
Yeah.
So the board is usually involved in that.
Maybe we just do it then.
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Well, the APC decided by then, so, and hopefully, we'll have a party now.
Well, let's see what dates that work for everybody, and we'll plan accordingly, I'd like to have all nine of us here.
I agree, I agree, especially when we're getting down to this point.
Yeah.
We don't know yet, oh, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm just wondering what that finance was.
Well, we're trying to set up a finance meeting for the end of the month, but these two have prior obligations, and so we're trying to figure out an alternative date, I was hoping we could figure that out, but two of the guys aren't here, so.
Probably do a finance meeting in May.
I'm trying to get a finance meeting this month, so like, in the next two weeks, we want to have a meeting.
As Mr. Basil, the Monday that is our workshop meeting, we talked about definitely starting half all over again, and just work, I mean, we're getting down to the point where what's on these is getting down.
Or what we can do for the May committee, the whole meeting, is there's certain things that we don't have to have on the agenda to that time, we just push them off until June or July.
Right, like, like some of these, these things we've done, and just make that right as a workshop and committee, the whole meeting, you'll have all nine of us here for the most part.
Yeah, okay, I will send an email around so the other three get the gist of the conversation, and we can hone in on a date specific for that. Thank you, Mr. Wolf, for bringing that up. Let's see, finance committee meeting, right, so that covers everything I had on my list. Anybody else? Okay. Presentation by public on issues, Mr. Cockle?
Yes. My question was about the Berkshire baseball facilities, and other schools teams that are using our facilities at no charge. I've actually brought this up for several years now, how come the board hasn't looked into charging any kind of revenue for these teams? I mean, we're looking at charging in a gracious amount of money to share for activities, and I think anything, any kind of fee you charge these groups would help offset what the parents and the students are being charged. And like I said, this isn't, I mean, this has been going, ongoing, I've been bringing this up ever since the activity was in place.
Which teams are you referring to?
Exactly.
What team?
Berkshire baseball.
Berkshire baseball.
Okay, okay.
Same thing you brought up last year.
But this is a thing we talked, we actually talked about this last year, and we had a meeting in May, and Mr. Potts was there, I was there, we had Mr. Smith, Mr. McCullough was there, and we had invited you to come, and we had the Berkshire baseball guys there, and we sort of went over what fields they're using, primarily, the fields that these guys are using are the middle school baseball fields, which we don't own, those are owned by the township, and anyone can schedule the use of those fields through the township or through the school district, we have first rights on those fields, clearly, in terms of scheduling for our own extracurricular activities. But after that, any organization can make an application to use those fields as they, as they deem fit. As it stands now, Berkshire Baseball's the only one that comes forward year after year to utilize those facilities. Now, we did talk about, well, should we be charging these guys, and how much should we be charging them to use these fields, and this, that, the other thing, I think the issue that came up there was, they in turn spent a considerable amount of money in both time and material rebuilding those fields, putting in backstops, building mounds, replacing the batting cages, the lines, the bases, all kinds of stuff that our students, our baseball team then use, and our softball teams then use. And, you know, would Berkshire Baseball then decide, hey, look, we're not gonna do that anymore, we're gonna charge the school district for those types of things, and then we in turn are charging them for the use of the fields? And so, it began, it just, that's where the discussion sort of ended, and I believe we actually quantified the amount of money that they had spent on refurbishing our fields, and it was in tens of thousands of dollars.
Right.
Per year.
Also, they were also paying the Daniel Boone Coaches Association to rent those things at the same time they were repairing and rebuilding those fields, and they didn't get that meeting, and they said they do not mind paying a fee for these, because they're already paying a fee. They were paying it to the Daniel Boone Coaches Association, because Tom McCall gave the field to the, uh, the Daniel Boone Coaches Association, and in return, they rented to the Berkshire baseballs. They were paying plus they were doing repairs, so, they're already in this process of building a one-point-five million dollar baseball stadium, I mean, these organizations are charging nine hundred dollars a student, you know, to participate in their tournaments and stuff, I mean.
Mr. Cockle, I will have to.
To have scholarships, or something. So, but I think, Mr. Potts, I think the point is, we don't own the fields.
Well, not only that, but look, I mean, we can, I have no problem looking at this again, and we can have another meeting about it, and we can talk about revenue enhancement. I would suggest, you know, you come to the meeting, I do have under my desk in my office a folder this thick that Berkshire Baseball gave us with all their financial statements and everything else in there, we, I know we spent considerable amount of time looking into this, this time last year.
Correct.
And so, I think it's just a question of pulling that information out again, and having that discussion amongst the board, again, of, you know, do we charge them for this stuff, or do we not? Do they charge us for the material improvements that they're making to our fields, or don't they? And, you know, I think what the decision we made was, the amount of money that we would have charged them to use the fields paled in comparison to the benefits that we were getting from them making the improvements for our baseball teams to enjoy. And so, that's where we left it, we felt like we were getting the better end of the bargain. Now, if there was a conflict between their use of the fields and some other organization's desire to use the same facilities, then I would think that would merit a lot more discussion, because we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to use the fields, they're available for the public, we didn't, my concern was one organization coming in and monopolizing those fields for their exclusive use, and the result of that investigation was, nobody else is looking to use the fields. So, as opposed to them sitting empty, go ahead, let Berkshire Baseball use them.
And nine of those fields used by, outside of, they're used by our school students during the day, for gym classes, you know, baseball and softball during gym classes, they make improvements to the fields.
Let's just.
We'll work through it again, but if we have a meeting, you know, you gotta, this year, you gotta come, Mr. Cockle, because you were invited, and we had a meeting, we went through this a year ago.
Okay, and what about with football and softball teams?
What?
Does the students ever use it in the football stadium, the football fields?
I don't know what you're talking about there, so.
Well, there was, I know there was immaculate using our softball fields, there was, I'm not sure if it was magic, someone using our football fields. It was just, I just played baseball, because I knew, I knew a little bit about the baseball part.